There's a way out to the pavilion or something.
How are you, sir?
Yeah, I'm good.
Turn on the sensor.
Hey, I'm Sean Couch.
Hey. Awesome.
Yeah, Jerry Carter.
I didn't even talk with him.
I think it's Mark.
Oh, hey, Mark.
Sean Couch.
Hey, Sean, I'm Mark Muswell. I speak to you nicely. Emily, I hope she could be here today.
Yeah, she's having, uh, very well this morning.
She didn't. If you took, you spoke with her, you heard it.
Uh, yeah, sir.
Very good.
And Sean, we have you, so this is our work session first.
Excellent.
So you're number nine on here and, um, so normally we'll let you have a couple of minutes just to kind of breathe and go over.
Sure.
And then somewhere around seven o'clock or so, we move into our council meeting.
Okay.
For the most part, if council doesn't have any questions after you do the work session,
Mm-hmm.
you're free to go or you're welcome to stay when we move in there. It's totally your choice, but.
We might want to move, we might, when we get in there, we might want to amend it and then move it.
Move it up?
Move it up because it's way down there at the end.
I'll do whatever works for y'all.
Okay. There's no other.
Oh, only other one, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's way down at the bottom on that, so if he wants to leave early, we'll need to bump it up to the top, so I'll go ahead.
That's John's pleasure.
Well, thank you.
I appreciate it.
I'll do it.
We'll take it. I won't fight you.
Is Robbie coming or just you?
Just me. Okay, the problem. I'm the best you get. I'm, I'm a protected stand-in, but I'll do my best.
All right.
Is John here?
Probably fast as birds, so give me a few minutes for him to calm down.
Do you want me to go down then, to white on him?
Man.
Do you want me to go off to white on him?
Um. Guess we can start back in and fill them in.
Okay.
Okay. Let's go ahead and, uh. Hi, handsome. Say a prayer. Lord, we're grateful to be here tonight. We're thankful for the beautiful warm weather. We're thankful for the beautiful flowers that put them out throughout town. We ask you bless us and watch over us, and we ask that you articulate our thoughts to best serve our city and glorify your name in this prayer. Amen.
Amen.
Um, on the work session, does anybody say anything you want to add to it immediately or just move on to it?
Real quick, Mr. Aaron, we do have a, um, a few more brands that we'll add when you're ready from a party night when we're ready to add this.
Um, let's add that. For at least discussion here at the end, um, number thirteen. So we have that conversation.
Do we need to put that one? That's regular thing to do?
Yeah.
Yes.
Put that down there on the end, uh, as number, yeah, number four, ten.
You want them before executive session?
Man.
Before executive session, so above thirteen? Okay.
All right. So consideration of Denver Park bank and account signers, um, making brought up a good point. You know, typically it's the city manager or Sean funds as your finance and, or me, we have that two signers. Should we have a park committee signer?
Yeah, I think we should have the park committee signer.
So like you and me are the park committee signers?
Hey, John.
Hey, Sean.
All right, I like it. Perfect timing.
Yeah. Yeah, I did pause through the door.
John, I think we're talking right, right off the top about the park committee bank and account signers.
Yes.
And shouldn't we have one of the park committee members as a signer, like a city councilman like Sean, and then one of the park committee signers?
Yes. Sean and I can do it.
Okay.
I'll be.
Okay. Is, is that typical or is that okay?
Um, John has a lot of experience in the situation. I think he'd be good.
Yeah. Be more than, more than a chair.
Yes.
Yeah. I just think, you know, instead of me, it needs to be, you know, somebody that's.
Sean, I might get sick or something. Maybe we need an alternate.
And we will need, I guess, an alternate, so I guess not bad.
Um, so on tab two, I had already typed up the letter, um, and it just included the two regular signers that normally sign at city hall, so I can just change that and get Jerry to swing by and sign that one day this week, if that's okay.
And then, and then after he signs up, presented the bank, you'll have to fill out all the bank paperwork, correct?
I, I was thinking about actually the CD, line item number five, but, um, I do have the paperwork and I did put Jerry and you, so I will have to reprint those. Um, I just need y'all to vote in the minutes. I just need minutes stating, um, that you all are assigned to signers, because I already have minutes to open the account. And then I'll fill out that paperwork and submit it.
All right. Same thing, consideration of tradition's bank seizure funds account, this is bank account for the police chief for the funds that he seizes, have a bank account, put that in. Chief, do you want to elaborate on that?
Um, pretty much that the, the funds can't be commingled with other general funds. This has to be completely separate. That's the, that's the main issue with that.
Okay.
This is, this is existing account.
So it would be.
This is brand new.
This just gets us in compliance.
We got to remove the tube off of that. I know it's brand new.
Yeah, brand new, yeah.
There's no tabs for it.
We don't have a lot. I mean, we may have four or six on the year, but they do.
Okay, it's supposed to be separate.
The current funds that we have, um, the previous city manager put it in general account, um, so we're going to work on, I've worked with Scott and we're just going to transfer them whenever that account.
Okay. Any discussion? Consideration of changing signers on the CD account, same thing, just changing signers, right?
Correct. Kim and Sean Moore were the signers on that account.
And we can't get to the count until.
The auditors.
Order what the balance is or anything until this happens. So they're leaving it pretty quick, so hopefully y'all can vote on that and get those documents signed. They can't talk to anybody easy enough.
When they need something on these salary accounts, is it just one person or is it two people?
Two.
Can we just put four people there?
Yeah.
Does Mike get, or we don't have this problem, come up or we're locked out?
I agree, we at least need three.
Okay.
At least.
I think, personally, I think that at least these two accounts should be the current signers and then you going and then add a third in the near future.
Okay.
That way, when she does AP throughout the week, doesn't have to cost somebody else to come sign it. That's it. That's same to it.
Being charged with the police and fire department, I can be the third.
Perfect. Awesome. Thanks for volunteering. Consideration of purchase of the SCAG armorer.
Yes, Brian came to me for this and, uh, he actually apologized for being here. His son had a opening season baseball game today and I told him we could handle it and he could go be with his family. But they have several bids that they looked at several mowers in here. There's, um, the SCAG is what they want and, um, they have the Cabo that's got ten thousand hours and twelve years on it. They looked at trading it in, fifteen hundred dollars, and it still works. They use it for the rougher spots when they cut around the wells and places like that. Now, what they'll do going forward, uh, but even with picking up the new city hall and all that grass.
It was a lot.
It's going to be a lot there, but you can see that the, uh, purchase price is ten thousand, six hundred sixty-five dollars and sixty cents, and the ones behind there are the other bids that they have. SCAG.
So I see two SCAGs. I see one for fourteen thousand and one for ten thousand.
We're going with ten thousand. That's the one that they chose. They were full price was thirteen thousand, nineteen dollars from our discount and obviously those sales tax there.
What's the difference in the, the two spines?
Obviously, you know, three thousand dollars more for a bigger size than that, but this is the one that.
Was able to.
And it was just quickly able to fit around different things, but it's too big. And, um, this guy is given the number one board for Brian.
Absolutely.
So, and.
We're able to this money, you can.
This is, yeah, he's got thirteen thousand dollars in a maintenance and equipment account that was budgeted for this.
Correct.
So.
Any discussion?
Remember, tap a one more.
Again, they get more expensive too.
Let's move on to consideration of members of Havercham comprehensive plan.
Hey, guys, we've talked about this a couple of times. I have spoken with, um, Adam with Georgia Mountain, Georgia Mountain Regional, um, Commission. They're the ones that are doing the COF plan for Havercham County. Megan and I met with him last Friday, well, last Thursday in our office, and, um, this is something that's required by the state for a total of ten years, but then it's got to be updated every five years. And the time frame is squeezing down. It has to be turned in to the state by October thirty-first, but it's got to be turned in in August for the preview to make sure we don't have to make any changes. And so Adam's job with the commission was to obviously do his meet with the, uh, meeting with the county that was going around Thursday, Friday, meet with all the municipalities. So basically it is a growth plan. It is a plan of what we want to do, what we want to see. We want to see parks. We want to see a new roadway area. We want to expand our city and see what is the time it's going to grow. What they do is they'll take and have, they're asking for two to five members, Adam, your citizens, and they're asking for it to be not just one age group, but spread across what your demographic, demographics would look like. So except if you give me all the one age group, they may only want something for them, and they want that cross section of needs in the city. And, um, so that's where we are. It's a plan of growth. If you don't participate, your state grants will be probably, not, I'd say, beyond, uh, the unlimited, maybe null and void, because you're not participating in this. And so the county pays for this and, uh, Megan and I have some homework for him to get some things about them. So I would encourage y'all to look back. I want to say the, the last one was done in twenty nineteen, twenty eighteen. And, uh, we just read up on the Denver's section to see what they did then, but we really need to get these names because they're going to have.
Mark, do you have the COF plan available, our current COF plan?
I do, but I, but yes.
I don't know.
It's packed in my box in my, in the other office to be, but I think, yes, it's not a big thing.
Is there a, like, on a version of it?
Yes. He told me that it was on Havercham's website.
Okay, okay.
It'll also be on whatever the regional commission for this area is, like, if this mountain.
Yeah, George Mountain, I think.
Their website has all the COF plans for the counties in their area. You know, there's certain things you've got to do in order to be a qualified government and that. So my, my question that come to me like an hour ago was, is this COF plan that they're asking us to do, is this for the county or is this for us?
It's, we are a section in the counts because they will hold meetings in every municipality.
Cor- correct, but I, um.
We just.
I'm really wanting to nail down to know whether or not that we have to prepare a second document to turn to. Does that make sense?
It does. I will confirm that for you in the morning. Uh, I feel confident we're part of Havercham though.
Is, is this something where we have to vote on names or?
Well, we, I, I brought this up two other times, once after the EDC meeting and once last month, because what's happening is there's not, there, there, there could, there would be a Denver's meeting, but we wouldn't have, there can't be elected officials. We may not have anybody there at that Denver's meeting to represent and say, hey, this is what I think for the city of Denver's.
How many members?
Two to five. And they're going to have one, maybe two meetings a month. And so we're talking March, April, May, June, July.
But, but what I'm getting at is, is this something where we have to vote on as body?
I just need nominations.
We can make, like, come to consensus, loaders, if we don't have the name.
Sure, sure. All we need is name, photo, contact info, because we can get that to Adam and he reaches out and starts sending them.
Really, if there's five nominations, that, that could mean one of each of us can nominate or one someone can agree to that, correct?
Yes, because that's what we're.
Could we agree to that?
Yes.
I would say that each one of us can nominate some, I think, if we don't choose to.
The city employees, big?
He prefers not, but he just specified no.
Yeah, you know what works.
They serve on a committee, but it can still.
You can go, and again, it was very clear, council can show up and go to these, just be careful with your corals and things of that sort. And he goes, he was very clear with this, these meetings are not council or elected official meetings. They don't have to say a word. It is Georgia Mountain Regional Commission's meeting. They're in charge of meeting. He says sometimes some elected officials want to try to drive the meeting and he goes, it's my meeting, maybe him. So he's the one that's in charge of doing this.
Is it, is that a hard rule though, like, in officials or is that?
He said no elected official. I didn't push him any further because I've known that from the past.
Okay. I, I really, I challenge everybody to come up with a couple of names in the next two, two weeks and email in because.
It's two weeks as long as I mean, get that even quicker. I just.
How did, how do you do it?
I just need to make sure that you contacted them and they agree one to two meetings. They don't have to go to every meeting. They just like them, because there's going to be a lot of people, and so they're just trying to get a variety that can show up. And again, councils welcome any one meetings.
He mentioned business owners, major business owners, um, large parcel owners in the city also, so not just age related.
Okay.
Your man's very good at his job. You can tell he is into it.
A lot to consider there. All right. Um, tree removal?
Yes.
I'll go ahead and ask. Is the tree alive?
McAllister? McAllister.
I see one.
Well, tree number two looks alive.
It's dead.
And if it's alive, I would bite y'all. McAllister tree service, oh, Brian and myself, there is no doubt that they're dead.
You want to get to see what y'all have?
And the reason the city is not taking these trees down is the pure size of these trees, because it is a crane that will be needed.
I'm okay if the tree's coming down, but we have to commit to plant the trees.
Did we do anything for Arbor Day this year? Or maybe we should do, maybe we should do something for Arbor Day next year. Do you, I grew the box about four years ago. They, they.
He said the big one that's closest to the, the building there, as you can, you could crawl up it through it. It's so hollow. He said if it hit the ground, it would explode.
John had the two, three of those trees in his yard for years and they died. I hated to see those guys.
I hear you on that, but these, these are the first, the biggest one you can even put your arms around.
Yeah, because one, you know, one reason our park is really popular is new to the shade, and we have to keep that in mind. If we, we plant a tree today, it's not going to give us any shade. And, um, it also dries that pop out. Those popper trees pull a lot of water out of that park.
But I can make sure, and speaking with McAllister again, make sure.
Doesn't look like it's true.
I know this, the, the big one, I know it's just right there by the sidewalk. The other one, it would be going further southeast. It'll be close to this, so it'll get a little clump, so it's probably close right in there.
Was you thinking about the question, whether they had a ride away or street or come down the park?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, Brian and we, we, Brian and I and Mark kind of talked about that, and he felt like they were in the ride away.
Did he say that on the second one too?
Um, I don't know. We talked about one on Hazel and then the ride away and the other one.
Holly.
Holly.
Holly. The one with Holly, that one too is bigger than his bucket truck, and that one is, that one is the right way. I'll verify the, the one that Jerry's in question of. Make sure it is dead and see whether it's to the right way.
Since this is court, I have hours.
Okay.
Do y'all want to vote on that or can we just strike it? I don't want that to be a sin of trade in the city.
What, what would, uh, is there any hurry to doing it?
Spring break is this week. Closing Massachusetts Street will be very easy to do. Was his thought. Because there's zero cars on Massachusetts at, at this point.
But we have money in the streets, so why don't we do it?
Yeah, we can do it. I just mean, we strike it from the agenda because it's under.
We even need to do it. It's part, you said we need to vote on.
No, I'm saying I don't think we do.
Trees do not.
Unfortunately.
It's good to talk about it, but I want to make sure it's dead.
I sent McAllister in connection.
Next time we went to your old vacation.
Um, consideration of the sign. Do you want to speak to this?
I'll be happy to.
Okay.
Hello, everybody. So my name's Sean Couch. I'm director of commercial relations as a book. Sorry, I can hear you.
Thank you, sir.
Um, so I'm director of communications for Normality Shored and House, so involved in anything from media relations, uh, public communications, advertising, and basically every title brand as well. So Mark, kind of, you and Emily have talked about some of the sign pieces that you may have in your packet. If you don't like, hit the high notes of it.
They have.
Okay, excellent. But essentially, the, the long and short of this is we're looking to take over operations of Havercham Medical Center effective July one. We've done a thorough inspection, walking through the entire exterior, building, the interior, and the short grid is we're not asking for anything that's not already on site today. So what we're trying to figure out is how we make our brand as visible as possible without having to invest any more dollars than are necessary to get folks to the right place. So the biggest piece we're looking at is the, as you travel towards the, the medical center running here, the first major monument sign you come into contact with is one, Rousa Diverse in Portland. All we're looking to do is take down an existing structure. We're going to put one right back up in its place that matches the look and feeling you got here, and the measurement will actually be slightly shorter than the current sign that's there today.
It's shorter, but wider, correct?
It is. That's correct. That's correct. And what we'll like to do is we'll erect that sign, the drawing you see there, um, we'll have it covered up, um, try to do it to where it's done there for a long period of time and cover it up. We'll have a temporary vendor in its place.
Where are you going to cover it up?
I'm sorry?
Where are you going to cover it up?
It'll be a claw.
Trash mat?
It'll be a claw. We'll, we'll make sure it's nice. Uh, and then, since we're going to do a small one evening for the community for that come July one, just a little celebration ceremony, um, the next monument sign comes to the main entrance, the call, meaning the, the light intersection. Uh, so that monument sign already exists today. Um, we know that the, the typical barriers here say that I think the current code calls signs can't be that close together, but again, we're not requesting anything that's not already there today. We're just going to put a small cap on the top of that sign and replace it with the Havercham Medical Center brand with GHS brand. For all the other signs that are throughout that parking lot, we're not removing anything. We're not adding anything new. We're just going to swap out that brand on top of the current state today until we can take over operations, do a more thorough assessment, and figure out where to invest the right dollar at the right places. As long as folks can find a way to get anything to get to, that's what we're most concerned about. We'd rather invest in services than the, the workforce there before we start worrying about signs.
Since we're going to approve this specifically, there's no proposed changes to this.
No. Correct. As far as we're concerned, that's fine unless we get into actually applying it, we hit somewhere we're snagging, in which case we'll be sure to over communicate, but I can't imagine we're going to have any deviation once you guys are there.
It looks, it looks good. Looks like, you know, if folks in the right direction off the one, we'll see any problems with that.
Any questions I can answer? All right, we're excited about this, and, uh, I'll hang around here just for the public sessions to make sure there are no other questions, and then I'll get down to here.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Um, consideration of participation in the group of cities week.
There are several pages in here that you look at. Basically, this is where GMA and the state, they, it's about educating the public about your city, what goes on in your city, what services they provide, police, fire. You know, the ball, parking wreck, if you have that and the different services there. They're asking you basically to tell the story about your city if we want to participate in this. They're asking you, for example, go to the middle school, the high school, have a work session there with the principal and teach the different classes about how to do municipal government, things of that. Give tours. You could use the new city hall by that time in April, um, write a letter to the editor about the different services that we provide, press releases, there's a resolution if we want to participate. You know, some of the cities go to this, do this, and it's all, I mean, they're, they're bragging about their city from top to bottom. They're doing touch a truck with the police and fire trucks and heavy equipment that they have and things like that. It's just bragging about your city. Um, they send you some pamphlet informations, posters, and there's different levels of level one, two, to three, um, for anything from doing art from the schools about their city. Um, um, although, uh, have y'all ever, have we ever participated in this in years past?
You know, I felt like in the past we have participated in it, but I thought that it was like a cleanup week or something.
Well, you can do that too. They do that too.
Okay. In, in Andrews, we talked about that one time. It was like a cleanup and we were going to look and see what it was for GMA, so I think that was something we've done in the past, because I remember GMA sending T-shirts of it. Now, you were.
Is that when we paid the, uh?
The fire. Yeah, we got the kids to play the fire hydrants.
So that sounds like the same kind of thing. You're just bringing people together and telling them about the good story that there is.
You know, I, I would love to participate in this. I'm, you know, of course worried about the short timeframe we have. Mark, could you reach out to some folks that feed on it and see if you can get some students involved or?
I can get that in the house.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so you and I can team up on that.
When we decide on this this eve- evening, I guess.
There is a, a resolution in the back.
I see the resolution, yeah. Do, do we need to decide which level that we're trying to participate or just? What can you put together?
Kind of, we can, I can just pick some things and, uh, again, it is playing off the tour of the new city hall and the, the school there, uh, the art, some programs like that for our first year getting into this. So, now, Megan and I can put some things together and, uh, make it happen.
Some good fun. Does anybody have any further discussion? Or yes, right now, comments? Make sure that y'all bring this to the DDA too and make sure that. We're at Andrew, consideration of ten meetings per month. Do you want to speak to that?
I just want to bring it up again, I haven't talked about it though, but. And all the decisions I'm making, uh taking it outside of here, I feel like I could be a little more useful if uh you spend more time taking me in through some decisions and I, I mean, I don't have the city hall wrapped it up, I guess, you guys get ready to move in. But we also, we have the rest of the building to figure out and uh, uh what we want to do with the gym. Now we have the, the restroom is inside the gym, but um, it needs some, it needs some work now, so. Trying to figure out how to work the funds, working on the budget, uh going forward and uh. Yeah, the revenue table, it's not been here to nine thirty, right now, so. I just wanted to bring that up as an option.
So, I said that, that we all get together every two weeks and talk about what happened and the girls, they have a new floor. And maybe have ideas that come up and we can work on things at the point and I had to wait two more weeks before we could all pile it together.
Right.
And it gets squished together, so. So who's ultimately responsible for setting the uh?
I will say that I have fault.
To your responsibility and re, rewarding you.
I, I'm more than happy to do meetings when they're necessary and I see that meetings are expensive. Like an average meeting costs the city, I'm just putting along maybe twelve, fourteen hundred dollars. So we have to keep that in mind, that that's, that gets expensive too. And I, I got to thinking about two meetings per month and about how useful the park committee has been. And maybe we can start some more committees to start spirit in some of these things. Like the new uh city hall building. Maybe some committees that, that'll even do a little bit more work and focus on this thing specifically. But at any given time for me, needs second meetings per month, by all means. I just don't know about having two of them per month, because even tonight, her, her meetings pretty short.
Yeah, it is, it's a little bit too short. What we used to have, we used to have a work session and then have a meeting two weeks later, so we just put it all together, so. There was also ordinance passed that you had to have at least a week's notice late before you had to, they would talk about something before you'd vote on it, so. Uh I remember it was a work session, it had to come up and it's actually an ordinance and it's on the books that we're supposed to have a week's notice in the twenty. Set a week before, I think y'all, y'all did that before I came on board, we've all been dealing with it.
Ignoring, ignoring that.
But it is an ordinance, something that's for that, for that consideration.
Um I still, as we see meetings necessary, I, I'm all in wanting to meet when we, when we got something that's important. Cause we're here to do the city's business, but as far as having two meetings on the books, uh I'm against that. Any other further discussion? Or do we go? On, on the meetings?
Uh huh.
I, I believe that's my uh, Thomas, correct me if I'm wrong, is that one, one thing that I do set meetings?
You do, the um, the, your regular meetings are set by ordinance, uh special call meetings, uh primary ordinance are called by uh the mayor and. Actually charter and your ordinances are inconsistent. Especially in the charter it says special, county council, special meetings may be held on the call of the mayor, two or three council members. Uh your ordinances provide that your mayor and council hold regular meeting on the first Tuesday of each month. Uh at such hours as maybe the council, in addition, the mayor may call a meeting at any time he thinks necessary upon serving notice each council member. So, that's not really inconsistent, but when it does, I mean, the, under the charter, three council members call such a meeting.
Basically doesn't really state where you have to have a work session, right?
No, you're only required to have one meeting.
One meeting.
But as far as committees and things like that, I, I really do think that we've got a lot of good, good work even out of our park committee that focuses not only on the park instead of multiple things and, and like we've been talking about, you know, shoot just cost savings and cut down the rate of money by four dollars.
Yeah, yeah.
Alright.
Let Mr. McAllister ask a question, Tom, man.
Sure.
Can we, do, I would love to have a committee for the school.
Okay.
Committee set up. Because if we can advertise that, have that meetings are walking through and talking.
Yeah.
And looking at that, if y'all, if it's your pleasure.
Provide the facilities and maybe, I mean, I didn't have a DDA, you guys are, uh, purpose on giving us a little drink, but we're all good though, I feel like this one would be a nice restaurant.
Yeah.
You know, so if, if there's a committee for work hand in hand with the DDA or something.
Could we possibly just expand DDA if need be, I mean, at times they're, I mean, they don't have a lot on their agenda.
Yeah.
I mean, at times, yeah.
They're just not, they, they are there in the park. They have different laws and rules, so I mean, if we were something that's just concerned with the city.
Y'all considering moving the police department? Cause that's, that's not as simple as just moving.
I think we're gonna have a response.
We deliver it.
Yeah, that's right, that's right.
Oh man, since Caesar salad, they gotta Caesar salad.
Alright, um I have to make it. I would, I would love some, some talk, maybe some committee members, people from, you know, a couple of us from the council mayor serving on these things, community members serving on these, let's start shooting emails around, get this names going, let's just touch the service. Cause this committee's the one that can get out and walk instead of us having our meetings walk in with your people. Consideration of uses of the brick and mortar park.
So that's a good segue into that because this would also be, could be rolled into if we have a committee for the, for the school for them to look at uses for that too. The reason I have it on the work session agenda is because, I mean, we've all kind of talked about uh what we'd like to see individually on that, but we've never actually discussed anything in public or opened it up to the public about discussions of, of what we, what we may want to see for the future uses of that park. Um, we've thrown out a lot of ideas, one idea that keeps coming back is making it a dog park. I know I've used this dog park and Donnie has too, Percy has too. Um I've seen several other people out there use that. Uh there's a fair amount of wooded uh property out there too that might could be used uh as kind of a walking or a nature trail and then we could look and see if we can get some kind of grants for a, a hiking walking trail in there. But I just put it on the agenda, kind of, kind of open it up to see if anybody wanted to talk and anybody in the public. Y'all want to join in at this point and say anything um about your feelings or open it up to the community if anybody's watching or, or why not?
So I put some thought into this after seeing this on the agenda and um my, you know, right after purchasing this property, my little boy's T-ball team used it as their, that's where we practiced. We practiced out here for ten times, it was a great place for T-ball practice. And while I was out there, I looked at the basketball court that's in disrepair and thought that that'd be a great place to have a basketball court for the community, but.
That plus Dr. Hendrickson mentioned an idea. Yes, I thought tomorrow we were going to the park committee, remembering the fact that the last meeting that Andy went out with too. There was a committee that sponsored or helped the parks for the cities in the same way that G A helps us as the city. And Eddie Cannon was uh the director, he's down in Spacemore for their parks and they have many ball fields and but basically to become, for us to become a member, we would nominate one person from our city to designate and we would follow the smallest category. And with that, then they would accept us and we would get support, they would come around, they would talk to us about ball fields, how to use this, how to get this grant, how to get a grant for the tennis for um, since I think it made it safe if you can get some funds for tennis if you don't put pickleball lines on it. So that might be an option for our gym making that we do. Or, or where the basketball courts are. Where the basketball courts are, so we open that door. And the point I'm trying to make is unless it's smallest, if we have one person, then we have to pay a small fee to.
You were, what that fee is?
I think it's like five hundred dollars.
Okay, so it's something administratively.
Administerable, so I thought maybe at the park commission, uh maybe tomorrow night, we could get a member that might volunteer to take that information and come back with it and coordinate with also the park that's up at the uh, Spalding elementary school and see how we can get help and grants and their ideas about turf and ball fields and traveling, yeah, people are coming in.
And, and then years ago, um from Artway, Donnie, what was that that you had talked about having put out there, do you remember?
Oh, it was a um small soccer field and uh.
What was it called though?
Uh it's. Thank you. Uh but it, it is basically a small like soccer field, smaller goals and uh.
But it was only the basketball?
It's not, it had its own har, hard surface. And uh, and I remember Wallace was helping him from the high school with the, the whole soccer coach and he was uh pretty pumped about it and I remember that he had some friends and he, he part at that time, uh there he had some friends and Rick were really friends and he was helping to kind of get the idea going. What was that called? Can I remember?
Probably it was foot something.
Footsoff.
Footsoff.
Was it footsoff?
Yeah.
And uh, but, but it's a, it's basically small aside soccer game, so you know you got five on five, three on three or something like that.
But there's always great ideas and that space is so flat and perfect for so many things. And it, it of course has to stay at the park, but what does that park look like? And you're right, we do need to open it up, we do need to open it up for, for online, you know, boat owners book or, or something to get some kind of some ideas, some kind of approach and put it into it. Cause I, I think all of us at this table have a different thought of what we'd like to see it look like and um it's just a great space.
Yeah.
I also think it comes down, what, what does our community need?
That's right.
What, what can best serve our community, is it a park or is it a footsoff? You know, having.
It is definitely used. We could really spend some time, we could really.
I'll post some other.
More opportunities that maybe has intrudes. Because it'd be great. But I, I appreciate you putting that on the agenda because it does need to be talked about, that's another area for the park committee for the.
I think, I think it's maybe more like exploring going the, going that route.
I do too, yeah, that's great.
We're just sitting for the power of the community that we're on, sort of, we're not the park and red community for the city.
Yeah.
There might be somebody on there, I just don't know why everybody's like, oh, well, you have a park committee, well, we have a renovation committee, we don't have a parks.
Right.
Community.
Yeah, you're right.
Or parks, or recreation, or parks. But that's what this would be. So that would have made up, that would have made up three sources. Then, then this would be, the council would have to have one person from the city to designate it, from the city if the parks.
Every decision that's, yeah, through the park to be.
Back and forth.
Yeah.
It needs at least, at some point be consensus on the uses of what we're gonna use that park for.
Yeah, cause it's not, there's no traction, there's no document and so we could be.
Um I mean, it's a small investment for a lot of resource helps. As I said, you know, some of these have large vehicles that can, that are the problems. They have a lot of employees, that's the safety, a lot of travel, some obstacles, tournaments that come in, so there are a lot of new departments. But they will quickly get their expertise for this small amount of money. It, it's, it's great that we got a, you know, blank how, where we actually have all these ideas that we can use this for.
Oh yeah.
So you can keep contacting them if you want to, send me his number if you like.
Yes, well, well, what I thought we would do is tomorrow night, we'd circulate around our group and then we'll get someone to volunteer from our committee and let them be the liaison, find all the information, we're about to committee and we can decide then as a park committee, we can present it to the council and the council can vote on whether we want to take one person and put it under the group, because they will be committed from the city for that person. So we have to get the cities to do that, so. But you know, as far as right now, I mean, it is a, it is public space, it is gated, there's fences around the entire perimeter. People, I mean, I go up there usually, it's just me and my dog who are up there. I just want public to know that, hey, this is, this is your park and you come use, there's no, nothing designated. Uh we've not designated that park for use for anything right now, so.
It's just open space except for the toilet.
Yes. And uh, Ms. Percy, do take your dog up there, please take poop bag with you.
Please.
Be considered.
Stop blaming it on the fox. Alright, let's move on to Grant, uh Mark, you'll lead off.
Yes, Mike has got some copies to share and uh, it was really good news we got through Chief Knight a couple of weeks ago. So Chief, if you'll step forward, you know, a second to read your. So Chief, if you'll step forward, give him a second to read your email about it.
There's a bunch of copies of this.
Yeah, there's, there's under public, to, um, this. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Wow, uh, Mark, Chief.
Sir, y'all wanna get through this, exciting times for the, the city on this one.
So we were awarded the twenty twenty-one A F G grant, um, for the amount in there, um.
How much is that?
It is, the award is eighty-one thousand, one hundred and ninety-six dollars and not ten cents.
Man.
With a match from the department of four thousand dollars and fifty-nine eighty-one. And, uh, owed a consulting company three thousand, eight hundred and sixty-six dollars.
Worth it. Nice job, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for seeking this out, and they told, told us about this months ago, good job. Uh, and this grant will go to cover, uh, our, our portion of the radius, so.
We should have another portion of this here, but we still have to do a little more work.
Well, it, it is budget, it is budget, this means this opens up, uh, you know, eighty-one thousand dollars.
And both, uh, this is gonna cover the entire fire department's radio and some of the police department's radios, correct? So that's.
The balance, I, I, I received the, the balance yesterday, which I shared with y'all, what our account is. I'm just gonna use a, a number off the top of my head, a hundred and forty thousand dollars, so. We all have all this in the budget already, and again, I have, uh, Alicia, Mark and I discussed this amount, and, uh, so.
So, so we're gonna get invoiced in this year so that we can, I mean.
Well, that was a question that I had from Chief there, because if we get invoiced, can we get invoiced and paid, or we have to wait?
So, it's got to be used regardless of twenty twenty-five.
But if we wanted to go ahead and pay, pay us earlier than that, that's what we need to verify, that we can go ahead and prepay the county for this much of the portion. So that's what we wanna verify.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice job.
Thank you, Chief.
Yes, sir, thank y'all.
All right, guys, is there anything else left up for discussion?
I have two things.
Sir.
Um, the, the Georgia ballot review commission, not apparently, it's, it's not even defined, if they do have a comp plan, but I sent you all a minute ago to have, to have a county page, and I'll have your joint comp plan, so y'all can take a look at it. And you did have joint conference plan, the county and all the cities. It's a, it's a singular document, like.
But is there a requirement?
For you, because.
For our home.
No, you don't, you, you just have to, you have to have a comp with the plan, and so corporates would find to do it, a joint plan with the county. Or with other cities, so, for a while, over in Jackson County, Houston, Calo, somebody, somebody at the Quad City, they had a Quad City conference plan. You can, it's an interim, you can either, you can.
Speaking on the comp, I can jump in back, would it be a good idea to have a section there with a joint comp plan with the university, with Piedmont?
I think you, you can certainly, if you want, it probably makes sense to put somebody from the university on the committee, um, as a representative. I don't know, that'll prove up to the regional commission whether they wanna have a separate section for, or whether they just wanna address the county now issue of our portion deal.
Mark, were you asking about that?
Well, the other thing is, is that, talking about committees, if you're planning ordinance under the historic district, there's a reference to the city historic preservation advisory committee, there doesn't appear to be anything in either charter or the ordinance that establishes that committee, it's just reference. But it does, there are some duties that apply, since you are gonna start talking about doing things in that area that is historic area, you may wanna think about, um, creating that committee and appointing folks to do that. Um, cause they're supposed to review new construction, alterations, et cetera, to the buildings in that area of which the police department, current city hall, the post office are in that area.
Megan, tomorrow, would you circulate an email with different committees, like a historical committee, a couple of different titles that we get out to or subtract, um, just now between our next meeting, so we can start having those discussions on which types of committees we'd like to see?
Yes.
Thank you. Was that one and two? Thomas.
Was that?
Was that both of them?
That was both of them.
Okay. Sorry.